Call the meeting to order. Regular town council meeting Monday, October 28th, 2024.
The United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Okay, Mike Joseph.
Here.
Dale Macklin.
Yeah.
Fran Hudson.
Here.
Adam Lent is absent this evening. Lee Trahan.
Here.
And Jeff West.
Here.
Do we have any disclosures of the conflict of interest this evening? None. Onto approval of minutes from the previous meeting, October 15th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Being done.
Dale Macklin.
Yes.
Fran Hudson.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
And Mike Joseph.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. And we have a point of order to add the Charter Review Committee back onto the agenda. I did not put that on.
It'll still be under table business, though?
Yes, it's still tabled, and it will stay on that agenda until November 5th, or after the November 5th election.
So you're adding it right now?
Yeah, just to the agenda.
Okay, now I'm gonna put it on.
Yeah, we're not gonna touch it, right?
No.
Okay. And I have on the agenda the MD3 presentation with Dr. Pei, but I don't believe he's here this evening. I did reach out to him, and I didn't hear back from him. Okay, boards and committee appointments. We have one reappointment for the Agriculture Committee. Joseph Gravel or Rocky, he's asked to be put back on the committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominees?
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Mike Joseph.
Yes.
Dale Macklin.
Yes.
And Fran Hudson.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Joseph Gravel to the Agriculture Committee passes five to zero. There is no tabled business this evening. Onto old business, ordinance number 11.
I'm sorry, just a second. You said it was tabled for the Charter Committee, though, right?
It is a tabled item, but it is not under table business because we're not, it's not an order, ordinance, or resolution. It is just a committee appointment that we are holding off on.
Okay.
It's nothing that we're gonna have to vote on outside of who you want to become a member.
We haven't been voted for the Charter Committee yet.
We have, there is a Charter Committee. We haven't appointed anyone yet, and that's what we're waiting on until after the November 5th election.
Okay, sorry.
Old business, the ordinance number 11-2024 pursuant to M- 22 MRS, section 43051. The municipal officers hereby enact the attached municipal general assistance ordinance with appendices in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a state thing that we have to do every year, for anybody that's wondering.
Can you explain that a little bit, please?
The state sets guidelines for general assistance if anyone in town is in need, rent, food, or anything. They have to come to me, and there's guidelines that I would have to follow. Those guidelines change on an annual basis.
Is there a couple programs on that? So if people have a hard time that they can get onto to help them out with anything, taxes or whatever, is that what you're talking about?
It all depends on their income and their need.
Okay.
Taxes could be one of those things.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Being done.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Mike Joseph.
Yes.
Dale Macklin.
Yes.
And Fran Hudson.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. New business, order number 21-2024. Authorization for the Public Works Director to expand undesignated funds in the Public Works Equipment Account and to purchase a 20-ton tilt deck trailer at a cost of $41,955 and an asphalt roller at a cost of $22,675. Total expenditure not to exceed $65,000.
I actually have Paul here to discuss that and answer it.
Ella, just for point of order, could we move that first and then second it before we get into discussions? Sometimes we forget that. It should be moved first.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, could we go with Paul first?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions? I mean, basically what it is, is the trailer we had from 1988, we broke the frame this summer. It's only a 10-ton trailer. It pretty well did its time. And we did well this year. As you can see, the spreadsheet I gave you, we ended up saving quite a bit of money on some of our purchases, so I figured we'd go for this stuff now. The trailer, we probably won't see till spring, even though, because we'll have to order one. So we'd have it for next year. This is stuff that was probably gonna be on the upcoming budget as well, so if we can get ahead of it. The rollers, the same thing. Our rollers getting pretty tired, and we had bought that used, so it's just, we do a lot of in-house paving, so having the right tools helps.
Was this in the budget that we spoke about?
It wasn't designated in this coming budget, but the items that you see there were the ones in designated budget, but we ended up saving quite a bit of money on our skid steer. And the other stuff, a few thousand dollars here and there, because we kind of budget round numbers, and then when the purchase comes in.
But these two purchases were not budgeted?
They were not.
And it's coming out of your budget?
It's coming out of my capital equipment. It's leftover funds. If you look at what Ella was saying, we actually show like 130,000 in there right now, but the truck hasn't been paid for. But I made sure that, you know, we kept the money at the contracted price. The truck's ordered. It will be here, hopefully, December.
How much money did we save on that skid steer?
We saved roughly almost 50 grand.
50,000?
Because we ended up going like a model smaller, once we started doing a little bit more homework, what we needed, and plus, we belong to Sourcewell, and that's a national co-op between municipalities and states. We actually paid less for that machine than the dealer can buy it for. These are the commitments that these vendors do with these co-ops.
Now, saving that kind of money, it says here, the available budget says 60...
5,000.
65,000? What's it gonna cost us for a 20-ton trailer opposing to a 10-ton trailer like we had?
The 20-ton is 41,955.
And we had a 10-ton before?
Yes, and we couldn't haul anything with it because it was too small.
Is there one in between that we could handle?
Not really. The standard out there now for the industry is 20 tons with air brakes. My last three trucks are all set up with air brakes to handle the trailer. So it's pretty much, I'm going with a tilt because with a regular one with ramps, we can't haul our street sweeper if we have to.
Yeah, I get that.
Because the street sweeper has that central wheel. So.
So in all, with the savings that we, on the skid steer, and what we're gonna be spending, do you have an approximate amount? Is that the amount that we're gonna be spending with the savings at 65,000?
Right. What we're going to spend tonight, 65,000, so we'll have $350 left in that account.
Okay.
It's not the same place you get money to do the roads, or fix the road?
No, this is strictly equipment purchases.
So basically, instead of turning any money in this year, at the end of the fiscal year, it'll just be a wash, because we already got the money in the budget.
I mean, it would carry over to the next year. Capital funds go from one end to the other.
Capital gets carried over anyway, that's right.
Like I said, there's long lead times on trailers, and the rollers, we're still paving right now, so it'd be nice, I think the roller, we can get fairly quick, but the trailers a while out.
So that trailer, you wouldn't be getting a trailer until?
Spring, probably.
Okay.
So if we wait till spring or next year's budget, then we probably wouldn't have it most of next summer, so that's a problem with a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, it's always taking time.
It's the long lead times.
Okay.
It's all coming out of the same place, right? It's all gonna come out of the same place.
Right.
And I want to thank you too, Paul, for putting up those signs, those stop signs on the Reynolds Road.
You're welcome.
And on that, thank you very much. You said you saved us some money on that as well, didn't you?
I did.
Would those cost us?
I think there is no quote from the police department, it was like 1750. I think we got them for 1300 and change.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Paul.
But that's just going directly to the company getting an actual price quote. I mean, the price they had was the quote you see online, and they say, these are this much money, but.
There's somebody that just told me about, there used to be a sign coming up on the China Road going towards China, and there used to be a 35 mile an hour sign, and apparently it's gone, I don't know if they hit it with a plow or what, but I know we don't have jurisdiction in doing anything on there, but why can't the state do the same thing, put it back up there, or to slow the traffic down when it comes to that intersection? Because they're coming up really quick.
As far as I know, the sign is over by Lomond, or whatever you wanna call it now. I thought it was still there. It's only 35, because once you get down the hill, it goes up to 50.
Well, yeah, when you're going up the hill, there used to be a sign there that slowed down the traffic. Yeah, around the very top, just before you get to the crest of the hill, it slowed it down. I think it said 35 or 40, I'm not sure, but I think it was 35, just to make people aware that they're coming up to an intersection. I know we can't put anything there for a yield or anything, but that's a concern. It's coming off the Reynolds Road, now we have the stop signs, fine. Those people are not just doing 50 or 60 coming over the top of that hill.
I hate to say, you're probably dating yourself, because I don't remember that sign.
Well, I do that quite a bit.
I've been here 13 years, but I'm not gonna argue with you.
Yeah, it was on the right-hand side going towards China.
One of those yellow ones, like they put for curves and that, maybe?
Yes, it was, yeah.
It was an intersection, sorry.
No, it's fine, if you guys know more than I do right now, so.
It was a suggested speed of 35.
Yes.
An intersection cross.
That's correct.
Okay, I can look into that, that's.
Yeah, please.
That's a phone call.
All right, good enough, thank you, Paul.
Paul, the post is still there.
Possible.
Oh, it is?
I see a lot of empty posts, so.
Any other discussion on this matter? Being done.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Mike Joseph.
Yes.
Dale Macklin.
Yes.
Fran Hudson.
Yes.
And Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Do you want to get those right off, Paul, so we can wait for the second reading, or do you have time for it?
We'll be back in two weeks anyway, so it's not a big deal. Like I said, the trailer's gonna come in here before Christmas, so. I'll stay up here, the next item's on mine anyways, if you don't mind.
Before we get into that one, though, Paul, the next scheduled meeting in November is scheduled for November 11th, which falls on Veterans Day. The office, the town office, is open. That's one of our floating holidays that we've elected for. So I just wanna get, see if who wants to have a meeting on November 11th, or if you wanted to move it to November 12th, which would be Tuesday.
I have no preference.
Me neither. I don't know, it doesn't matter.
Are you working the 11th?
I think we all are.
I have to finish my election stuff, so I will be there, probably.
Well, let me, would you rather do it on the 12th to give you a little extra time to finish up your election stuff?
It would give me an extra day to get you the agenda.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
I don't have an issue with it.
You want to do November?
Why don't we do it the 12th then?
Okay, thank you. So I'll make sure we get that out. So now we are on to discussion. Paul wants to talk about the old junior high building.
Before I do that, I figure I give you guys a couple updates on some of the projects we've got going, just so you guys know. Paving, we did get started on Noel Road this morning.
On which road?
The Noel Road.
Noel, sorry.
And they should get over to the North Pond Road tomorrow. Then after that, it's a crap, it's a crap shoot to where they're going. No, they did one side, and when I was there around 2 o'clock, they were turning around on the Abbott, coming back, and they had about 12 trucks lined up, so I know they weren't gonna get it all done today, but it closed tomorrow. To the Pond Road, get that covered up, get out of the dust.
The plant doesn't really close until, what, just before Thanksgiving?
Usually Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
It's gonna make a hell of a racetrack.
Talked to the guy with the uniform, because it's not my department. It's damned if you do and damned if you don't, so. Jaffe Brook, pipe is in the river, buried, tested, approved. They should be out of here this week.
Finally.
They're demobilizing, picking up their barges and everything, so it went really well. We had a little mishap last week. They hit our existing force main with the barge and punched a hole in it, so it took about 29 hours to get a diver in there and fix it, so we do have a report to DEP. We lost 150,000 gallons of sewage to the river, so I don't know how, we've done our reports, I don't know how DEP's gonna treat it. They could come back and want to slap us, I hope not.
Well, that would be on the company one, Paul.
Not really, not with DEP. DEP looks at it, it's our sewer line, it's up to us to make sure that nothing happens to it.
Of course they do.
But the people that work, did the work for us, they must be insured for something like that, too?
Well, they did, and they got on the phone, they found divers, they got materials. I didn't have to fight with them, they were more than upstanding to get it done and fixed. It just took a while to get some divers. They had come out of New Hampshire, took a day.
Yeah, they should be insured, in fact, when they busted a pipe, when they're getting paid for it, they should be insured for that.
Right, if we get fined, then I guess at that point, we will fight that battle, but.
Yeah, okay.
Up to now, I haven't heard any really bad stuff from DEP. When we called them, I called them with Nick, who runs KSDD, and they were more unhappy what we were doing. We kept pumping, because we're still getting probably 90% across the river, so most of it was still going to the plant.
But this was in the new pipe?
No, the old, existing one, which was not buried, it's sitting on the bottom. Last year wasn't a problem, we had six feet of water. This year, we get two feet of water. So it's, it happens. They were on the phone, they called me, they called everybody, and it was handled as quickly as possible, but I want you guys to know what's going on. Cushman Road, I know we've had issues with some of the paving that was done out there. Last week, I got a commitment, 80% from DOT, then 2026, they're gonna pave Cushman Road and the rest of Clinton Avenue all the way out to the Compaq Line.
And they're doing that when?
2026.
Okay.
So we're a year plus out. It's their road, it's their funds. The more we can get them to do, the better it is for us. We'll probably come back and ask for funds to do the sidewalks, they don't do sidewalks. They go up to the gutter and that's as far as they go. So if we want the sidewalks repaired, replaced, that'll be on us, but usually get a pretty good price if you go through them and their contractor, so. Because we did China Road the other year, and it cost us 30 grand, $39,000, maybe to get all those sidewalks reset and repaved, that's not a bad deal. So that's the Cushman Road. For those of you who aren't aware, the old bridge right now is scheduled to be shut down December 16th.
And that's gonna be open when?
June 20.
June 20th?
That's the current plan. Every week, we have a meeting, it kind of bounces around back and forth. I mean, they're doing real good, they did a second pour on Friday for the deck. There are only a couple pours short of being finished on that side as far as the deck.
All the way across?
All the way across.
Really?
And they're, they talked about starting to form up for sidewalks, when they start doing sidewalks, they're moving along well.
So they're ahead of schedule?
I would say so, but they won't admit it, but, you know, but it's going well, so.
Paul?
Yes.
When you said open June?
20.
20, I mean, is that gonna be just?
It's gonna be the same way it is now, it's gonna be coming from Waterville to Winslow.
Okay.
But it's gonna be on the upstream side, the new side.
Okay.
The flow of traffic isn't gonna change.
Okay, that's what I was gonna add, you know, if they would, when they put the other side, if they were gonna.
No, it'd be too nice for us, but no, it's, and maybe June 20, maybe it'll be open before, it depends. But they need all the, all the bridge, and they start tearing down the old stuff, the old arch bridge, and they need, they need to be safe, so.
What's the date for the completion of that bridge?
Spring of '27.
Spring of '27?
I think they were hoping to get it open by like December of '26, and then the rest is gonna be, you know, final touches, and, but the bridge is supposed to be open. And with a little bit of luck, if the weather holds, might be quite a bit early, I don't know. They got hit pretty hard last year with the same storm, we all got hit. Had to reset, regroup, so. But I figured, at least get it out there, so you guys are aware of the bridge closure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And the last thing I had was the junior high. As far as the soil contamination, we knew there was oil in the ground. Couple weeks ago, I had a contractor come up, do more test borings to try to quantify what's there. He's got a quantity, he hasn't gotten test results on what the material is, but his rough numbers were looking $300,000 to clean up the oil spill that's in there.
Didn't we get a report that it didn't spread at one point?
Yeah, it hasn't spread, it hasn't spread.
Down deep.
But it's still fairly deep.
Yeah.
And that's all we had. The first boring just said, yes, there's something here. This one, we were able to go around it and figure out, it hasn't gone here, it's here. But the depth, the problem is, is the disposal cost, it all has to go to one of the landfills. You're paying 85 to $100 a ton to dispose of it, just for disposal, not digging it up and hauling it.
Who's the one that's disposing it?
That's gonna have to go out, we'll have to decide what we do with that. I mean, the environmental company, Beacon Environmental, can take care of that, but whether we hire trucks to do it, or we do it with our trucks, it's gonna depend, time of the year, and, because they either gotta go to Hartland, or they're gonna go to Juniper Regional Town, probably the only two places that they contaminated.
They didn't do that in Nor'Jwak?
Nor'Jwak takes a very big act of Congress just to get in there. Their paperwork's about this thick to cross the Ts and dot the Is and get permission. It's not that it can't go, but it's complicated process, even DEP doesn't deal with them.
Really?
When I've had to deal with DEP for small spills, they send us up to Hartland, or they're just easier to deal with. But it's the disposal cost, so I figured I'd throw that out, so you guys have something to.
Okay.
Not trying to ruin your day, but it's, those are out there, and it's gonna have your hand taken care of, perfectly before we take the building down.
Ella, do we have any money in our, in any accounts to cover any of that?
No, this is gonna be an add-on to the costs that we're gonna have for stripping out our asbestos and tearing the building down. This is gonna have to come out of your fund equity account. Can I ask what happened to KB Cap? Well, I think this contamination has scared everybody. I mean, this is a big hit, even for taxpayers.
The problem is, I mean, you're looking, soil is a ton and a half per yard, so if you take out 150 yards or something, which is not a lot of material, you're up to 2,500 tons, and that's right there, that's almost a quarter of a million dollars. So it adds up, it adds up really fast. He said the last one he did was, I forget what he said, it was like 1,600 tons, and that was 275,000 or something.
So does there a projected date of when we're finally gonna be able to get rid of the building?
Well, we finally have talked with Craig from Icon, and I've got paperwork, I talked with him today, I know Mike has talked with him a couple of times, and we're actually going out to, we're holding a pre-bid, bid meeting on November 6th. The bid dates are gonna be due on November 14th, so we're gonna get that rolling ASAP. The soil, I guess I have one question, if I might. What if we choose not to dig that up? What if we tear that building down and remove it and take a breath and then address the soil after, especially since it hasn't spread and it's just contained in one site?
I'm just concerned if we start taking out the foundation, it's gonna get all mixed in together, and the foundation, that could get buried just about anywhere.
Right.
Now won't be able to. It's just like, if you don't take the asbestos out first, now everything's asbestos contaminated, the whole thing is gonna have to be disposed of.
And the asbestos was not as bad as first thought, correct?
I don't think so.
100, 150,000.
What's that?
100 to 150,000 for the asbestos.
The building comes down first and then?
No, asbestos comes out first.
Right, the asbestos, then tear down the building, and then worry about everything else, like you said.
We may have to address the soil before we do anything, and that would be a summertime or springtime job. That could hold us up a little bit, depends on how much money you want to take out of that fund equity.
Paul, how, as far as the building, how close is it to the tank that's contaminated, where we're getting the contamination?
We're not anywhere near the tank.
We're not anywhere near it?
We're on the front part of the building, where apparently, from the old timers telling me, there was an old industrial art shop there.
Yeah, it was.
Does anybody remember that?
Now, so if it's that far away from that, can't we take down the building before we take out the?
But it's right up against the building.
Oh, it's right up against the building?
It's right up against the building. It's between, if you're familiar with it a little bit, you know where the stairway is that goes down to the bay. It's between the stairway and the front of the building.
Okay.
On that side.
Okay. I thought it was on the side of the parking lot.
No. And it hasn't gone anywhere. His test borings came back pretty much the same, that it was clean, it hasn't spread, it's stuck on the clay, but.
Is that the worst possible scenario for that cost of that?
Yeah.
It is? So it could be less?
Could be.
Well, pray for that.
And we can do some, you know, like I said, we can do some in-house, the top layer apparently is not contaminated, so we can dig that out, put that aside, take out the contaminated material, put this stuff back in.
How deep is it?
I think it was down about 15 feet.
Okay.
Down quite a ways. But as soon as he has test results, we'll know exactly if it's fuel oil or if it's, it smells like fuel oil, but why there's fuel oil there, I don't know.
It's been a long time sitting, I really hope to see it start going here.
Yeah, but there's clay around it, and it's kind of trapped there, you know, so.
Can't leave it.
But we can't leave it, because it's, you know, you can't do anything with that site if it isn't clean, so.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
That's it for my bad news. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the Lithgow Library, Ella.
Okay.
So we've lost the boiler of the furnace in the Lithgow Library. We've also lost our tenants. The, the contract that we had with them for leasing has expired this spring and they've chose to move on. So the town of Winslow is going to have to repair this or, or drain the pipes. I, I had Hools go up and give us an estimate. We, we use them for pretty much everything on plumbing. And to replace that boiler, it's gonna be about fifteen thousand dollars because it's a fairly good-sized unit. If we wanna just not mess with the boiler and drain the pipes, it's gonna be at the very most eighteen hundred dollars. So we're gonna have to make a decision, and if, I mean, especially with cold weather coming, the way it is. I don't anticipate us being able to lease this again without actually going out there and advertising if we choose to go that path with it. Um, I know it's been mentioned about possibly putting it on the market and selling it. Uh, you know, this is gonna be a council decision. This is a historical building, it's been part of Winslow's history for, since the beginning of time, I think. It's an old Carnegie library. Uh, it's been flooded. Every time there's a flood that goes over that peninsula, that place gets flooded. I think that that's what did this boiler in back in December. All torn apart down there, apparently the lot, the tenants who were in there, they had a gentleman who worked for them, who was somebody who had had experience in boiler, boilers, and they pulled it apart to find that it can't be repaired. And we looked at that with holes and it's unrepairable. The, the cinder, the firebox is all crushed in, so it needs to, it needs to go. So the council's gonna have to make a decision. I have no account set up for this building because we haven't had to maintain it for thirty years. And so we have no money set aside to handle this. Personally, my recommendation right now would be just to boil the pipe, to, to drain the pipes and let it set through the wintertime. And so we don't have any more damage, and then next spring, we can make a decision over how we wanna move with it. And it'll allow me to build it into the budget if the council chooses to go and replace that boiler. This building doesn't have a lot of value to anybody if we don't have some form of heat in there.
Would you heat the building while wintering on?
Well, I mean, we'd have to keep it to the point where we didn't let the pipes freeze, so it would have to burn some oil.
So you'd be better off just draining it for now?
I would say just drain it, buy us some time to figure out what we're gonna do with it. Who knows, maybe somebody will come along there and wanna rent it. Uh, I doubt it with the flooding problems that we're having down there lately.
Did they move all of their stuff out of there, Ella?
No, but they're moving it out. They're in the process of doing that. It's still got a lot of stuff in there.
Because I think we have some stuff in there too, I think.
Do you?
I believe so.
Yeah. They're, they're in there painting it right now, trying to bring it back to where it was, because they had some mold issues after this last December. And they've, they've hired a company to come in and mitigate the mold, uh, and now they're going in with a coat of paint on everything. Uh, it's the Genealogy, Genealogy Society, yeah.
And there was how much to drain the pipes?
About eighteen hundred. That's the high end. They said twelve hundred to eighteen hundred, depending on how much work it comes to drain it. It's got the old steam radiators through the whole building, so they've got to drill them and do something with them.
And they've been there for how long, renting it?
A long time.
Thirty years?
Yep, yeah, yep.
Well, it'd be foolish to spend...
The contract that we have was actually hand typed on a typewriter, so it was quite a while ago.
Oh, my gosh. Well, it'd be foolish to put a lot of money into it if the building isn't even salvageable or sellable.
Yeah. Given the fact that we're trying not to raise taxes, I say just drain the pipes and let it set and see what we can do with it, make a decision over the wintertime. If the town wants to retain it, then we can spruce it up and do something. If the town wants to dump it, then we can do that too. Be a great place for a bar.
Has there any renovation that's been done by the town in that place unless, nothing? Windows, nothing?
Nothing that I can, no, it's all the original windows. If anybody wants a tour for the building, let me know because I've got a key for it, and it's quite a, it's an old Carnegie library. When the Carnegie's built these libraries all across the country, Winslow ended up with one of them.
Nothing's been done to that building since, um, the flood that moved the library out to begin with.
Right.
Love how long ago that was.
Yep.
Personally, I'd say just drain it for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, on to two-hour parking on Bay Street.
So I was approached a couple of weeks ago by the gentleman that owns the library, I mean, the laundromat on Bay Street. He's apparently getting into some kind of neighborhood dispute with his next-door neighbor. Uh, when they renovated that building, they got a commitment from the town, a verbal commitment. We actually found some paperwork on it where the town would allow the, the laundromat to utilize that street-side parking, which runs parallel to Bay Street. It's right across from the Asian Cafe. The neighbor is now going down and parking his vehicle down there and blocking parking for customers when it gets busy. There's nothing preventing that from happening. He called Dave Allen from the DOT, and Dave gave us permission to put two-hour parking signs up there, which would resolve this issue. So if the neighbor decided to park down there, he couldn't park down there for more than two hours. And, uh, so I'm in here to get a feel for the council if they wanna move forward with a two-hour parking sign in that location. Uh, if you do, we have to draft up an ordinance that would allow that to take place because the police department wouldn't be able to enforce any parking violations without a town having an ordinance. So I just wanted to share that with you and, uh, and, and get some type of direction, how you'd wanna go with that. I can understand the frustrations of the gentleman who owns the laundromat. I know that, uh, I sent Garrett, the code enforcement officer, out there to kind of investigate and see what's going on. And the neighbor has a large parking lot behind his house, which he doesn't utilize. So it's, it's, something's happened there between the two of them. And, uh, so I'm, I'm okay with this at the council because it makes sense to have a two-hour parking. That way you're not gonna have somebody that's parking there all, all hours of the day. And then his customers coming in to do the laundry, I, I can't imagine them wanting to stay more than two hours in that parking spot. And we probably wouldn't enforce any parking issues unless we get a complaint on it. Uh, your, your police officers aren't gonna go down there, mark tires and, and check the amount of time they're parked. So if somebody calls a complaint on it, we'll deal with it.
Now, could we do it for just an hour? Do they have enough time to?
Well, if you're gonna put your laundry in the washer and then you gotta wait for it to drop, wash, and then go into the dryer, probably two hours is more practical. I did discuss that with the owner.
Right.
Is there any way to get a sign that says parking for laundromat use only?
I think it would be more, I, I think it would be more effective to actually have a time limit on it. If we put the parking for laundromat only, then maybe the people across the street wouldn't utilize it. Maybe they're using it too. I mean, so, um, this is just to resolve an issue.
Ella, when it was pine tree furniture over there, LeBaron Spalding and Mr. Poole owned that. I thought they owned that side of the street up to that point where they parked. I thought they owned that.
I haven't found that. I mean, it's, you, you have, uh, you have, it's, it's a state road, so you're gonna have the right-of-way issue, and I think that that falls within that right-of-way. I don't think that anybody actually owns that but the state, but the state has authorized him to be able to use that for parking.
Okay. Because I know if we needed to ask him, I know he's still, he's still around, he still lives in Winslow.
Yeah, we've got, Garrett actually located all the paperwork on it, and we found out that the council, when they approved that business, they allowed him to utilize that, that, that part of the road to park on.
Okay.
So if the council is, is okay with this, we'll draft up a parking ordinance and, uh, and make a two-hour time limit on it.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
We'll have that for the next council meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the ambulance?
Yes. We've gotta add one more discussion item. As you know, the town of Fairfield has lost their rescue truck. They lost the motor in it. Uh, they have asked the town of Winslow to be able to use their spare hours, one of our ambulances, to get them through this time period. Uh, they're actually trying to figure out if they're going to replace the engine. It sounds like that that's more likely going to happen than buying a new one. I haven't heard a timeframe on it, but my guess is it would take up to a month. Uh, the one thing that I wanted to share with the council on this, I know that we've got other plans and things going on. Uh, but Fairfield lent, gave, gave us one of their tanker trucks back in two thousand and six, and they allowed us to utilize it until our truck got out of the shop. City of Waterville has allowed us to use one of their plow trucks for an entire winter. Uh, they've allowed us to use the trash pickup truck when ours was, um, inoperable. So this type of working together really has a huge benefit for all of us. Uh, this is something that I actually have the authority to, to make this decision, but I'm trying to make sure that you guys are all involved in this discussion. Uh, when Fairfield allowed us to use their truck, the contract, I sent it out to you, you noticed it. Probably it wasn't signed by the council, but it was signed by the town managers and the fire chiefs. So, uh, I want you to be involved in this conversation, and, uh, I certainly think it would be a mistake by not allowing to use that truck. And I know the timing's not right for anybody, but unfortunately, when these circumstances happen...
Through the chair, we have an ambulance right now that's ready to go. All we have to do is make some phone calls, and we could actually stop bringing some revenue in it. I would say, I think we ought to use that for the public here, as far as a public service for the Winslow public. And, uh, I, I understand that they're going through tough times over the, to Fairfield, but I don't know. Can't, was it an ambulance that they had that was broken down?
They don't have an ambulance. They have a rescue vehicle, which is a, a pickup with a service body on the back that handles the rescues.
And this is just for a month, you think?
Well, a couple of weeks, three weeks, a month. We don't have a, it, it, I'm gonna learn a little bit more about this, possibly on Wednesday. I think they were planning on calling a special council meeting so they can discuss this over which direction they were gonna go. Uh, so, um, if they replace the motor, it's probably gonna be a little longer period of time than if they just buy another truck off the rack.
I wanted to chime in just a little bit. I watched the Fairfield town meeting where they discussed this, and they have no idea as of last week what they're going to do.
Okay.
They, they even said it wouldn't even be brought back to them, at least for a month, on which decision they were gonna make.
Okay, I got this conversation with the town manager.
And then I watched it and heard it as well. So I think that what you need to understand, what a lot of people may not understand, is a rescue vehicle does not transfer. That means doesn't take you to the hospital. It just goes, sees what you need, calls for an ambulance, the ambulance comes, picks them up, takes them away. So this is a rescue vehicle, not an ambulance. If you're going to go and respond, and I understand we got a tanker and all of that, but I'm sure we didn't use a tanker that often because you don't usually, from Fairfield, lend us to have that many fires. But this, if we lend this ambulance that we've already got the plans for using, they're going to be driving nine-one-one, red lights and sirens, and to multiple calls a day. So it's a lot of wear and tear on the ambulance itself, and it's an older ambulance, and God forbid something happened to it. The insurance isn't gonna buy you a new one because it's an older one. So you have to think about all of that. And I also, um, understand that Fairfield currently is responding to emergency calls using the Fairfield's chief's SUV that the town supplies. So they are currently running their nine-one-ones and are all set using that vehicle as a, as a rescue vehicle. So they don't have a need, a dire need because they've got one already. And their backup one is the same backup one they were using prior to this one. So it's not like they, they're not doing calls. So, and also I looked into, because I remembered from my days of ago, you license an ambulance differently than you license a rescue vehicle. You license an amb, and our, and our ambulances are licensed to be a transporting ambulance, which means you are licensed at the level to pick them up and bring them to the hospital. You get a different license to do a rescue call, because they are not licensed to take you to a hospital, it's a different license. That's main EMS protocols and laws. So I don't even, they think they could use our ambulance because it's already licensed as a transporting ambulance. Unless you get rid of our license, put a new license on it as a rescue only, so you might wanna look into that too. I'm all for helping, absolutely, but I don't think they can use an ambulance as a rescue vehicle. I remember that from my days ago as well.
Okay. I, I did have an in-depth conversation with Deputy Chief Murphy, and he didn't mention any of the complications that you're mentioning, and he, he was fully in support of helping them out.
Oh, I'm fully in support of helping them as well. It's just...
So this is a text message that he just sent to me while you were talking. Apparently he's watching. Uh, still no movement as of what they're going to do, however, I know that they're afraid the chief's SUV is going to break down as well. The transmission is having issues with it, is an FYI. So that's, uh, just to kinda add that to it, so...
Again, you have to look into licensing because you can't, you can't just do it, I don't believe.
Well, I, uh, I'm sure those are all concerns, and, and I'm all in favor of allowing them, but, and I'll agree with Fran that there were some legal issues there that will have to be worked out as, as she stated. I think we can, I would prefer to authorize you to allow it for a period of thirty days to begin with, providing all of those legalities are taken care of with Fairfield, including insurance, of course.
Right, right.
And licenses and, and whatever, because Fairfield still can't transport.
No, they never were.
That's right.
Right, yeah.
And they gotta make sure that Fairfield knows that.
Right.
No, but they have to have even different, different equipment on a rescue vehicle compared to an ambulance.
So I can certainly explore this tomorrow. You know, I, I can give Melissa down at Mina EMS a call. She'll be able to clarify a lot of this stuff and, uh, and, and take it from there. Uh, so I guess I need to, I don't need to, but I'd like to have a straw poll from the council on how to move forward with this.
I mean, as long as the licensing thing is kosher, I'm, I'm good with letting them use it. I'll give you the, my opinion, if you wanna go down that.
Through the chair, I got, I got one question. Fran, you said something about a rescue and the ambulance. Now, let's say we have the ambulance, we lend them that ambulance. That person there says, "Take me to the hospital." They can't take them to the hospital.
No.
So is there a liability that could possibly come about?
I would think that if I called and said, "My dad's having a heart attack," they use our ambulance and go, and then they say, "Yep, we need to wait for an ambulance," and then God forbid something happened, they're gonna scream and yell, "Why didn't you take him? You have an ambulance sitting right..." That's probably why they have the rules and the licensing the way they do.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, there's other avenues they can do too, because we used to do it, you know, at Delta. You can just rent. You can rent an ambulance. You can rent, you know, what you need. You can, no.
Where?
All different, different, Sugarloaf rents ambulances. Uh, but there again, Delta too, I don't know why they wouldn't look at that, because Delta only runs like four or six trucks a day. They've got like ten sitting there.
I'll have a, a deeper conversation with, with Michelle tomorrow and find out some of these particulars. And, uh, you know, as far as the truck, if we did help them out, I would highly recommend removing the clot out of that vehicle so that they can't be transported.
Oh, they wouldn't, they wouldn't transport. They know they can't. But I would want a definite timeframe of how long they plan on using it, because like we said, we've got it all ready to go to do what Winslow wanted to do with it.
Yep.
Because all they have to do now is just make the calls, and we're ready to go tomorrow.
Yep.
Well, nobody's shown me the numbers yet, so you won't get my vote on that yet.
Well, and that, that's gonna be a council vote for us to move forward with that. That'll take the council to do, because we'll have to draft up an order for it. All right, so you're okay with it. Fran, where are you?
I'm fine as long, until, I'd like to know how long, if you're gonna draw up a contract.
I will, what I'll do is I will give Michelle a call tomorrow and get as, as much detail as I can, and I'll draft up an email and send it out to the council as an FYI.
I mean, how long they plan on using it.
Yep, no, I hear you. Yep, exactly, I hear you.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor as long as we work out the logistics.
Okay.
Uh, so am I.
Okay.
I will be too. Let's say if there's gonna be thirty days, let it be thirty days, but not exceed that amount of time.
Okay.
Uh, review it after thirty days or whatever.
Yep, yep. I'll, I'll chat with her and find out. Uh, it may be a couple of days down the road before they decide they're gonna do something, so... I will, I will make sure that you are fully aware of where this goes.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm sure that within that thirty days, they'll have whatever meetings or whatever they need to decide, and we just need to emphasize to them that, you know, if we do let them, we do let them borrow it, that they need some definite answers for us as far as what direction they're gonna go, and then we're gonna stick to it.
We will work out the logistics, and I'll let you know what we find out.
Thank you.
Okay.
My phone's blowing up, so, sorry about that.
On to public comment. I'll read my statement. Any persons wishing to verbally address the council on any matter before it may do so, providing permission is first obtained from the council chair. Each person addressing the council shall stand and give the person's name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record, and shall limit remarks to the allotted time of three minutes by the council chair. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than the council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a counselor without the permission of the council chair. No question shall be asked a counselor except through the council chair. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the council chair, barred from further audience before the council, unless, unless the permission is granted, the permission to continue be granted by the majority vote of the council. Side conversations within the audience will not be tolerated.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak on?
I do. Louis Bourgeois, two-thirty-eight Abbott Road. Last meeting, the lady that works at the police department, you said the cops were being, were burnt out because of all the stuff they had to do. Didn't she take care of some of that stuff? What?
Would you like me to respond?
Not supposed to, but I'll let it.
Okay, so I actually have Deputy Chief Wayne and Director McDade out there. And actually, Deputy Chief, would you respond to Louis's question on this? He's asking about the troops being burnt out and getting rid of this position. Is that gonna add more burden to them?
Before, before you add, sorry, I need you to go to the microphone so everyone can hear you.
As far as any of the duties being transferred on to the troops, zero. Um, I've assumed all her duties. So nothing is getting passed on down to the police officers.
So is that taken away from you though, doing your job out on the road?
So, for example, this past week, between a training I had and my regular days off, I was gone for nearly a week. I took care of all of those duties today in about two and a half hours.
So you're doing the paperwork for the cops that are up?
Nobody can do paperwork for the police officers. They have to write their own reports. So any kind of support they get would be, we upload their cases to the district attorney's office. Um, I'm doing that. No additional duties have been placed on our police officers.
So what, this is a good idea then, that we got rid of that?
I believe so. I really believe, uh, town manager Bowman made a great decision, saving the town in excess of seventy thousand dollars a year. Not just this year, next year, so forth and so on.
I just worry about the cops being burnt out.
Well, we're trying to address that. The, the burnout factor is the fact that we're still three officers shy of a full staff. We have three candidates in the process, plus we have a couple more applicants waiting in the wings, just in case these three don't make it through. It's quite an extensive process. Takes several months to bring someone on board.
Randy, I have a question for you. I know, is one of the police officers, doesn't he have to have a knee surgery done?
Correct. That's, that's actually added a little bit more stress because he's out as we speak.
And he's gonna be out until when, February or January?
We're not a hundred percent certain. Um, it's up to his physician, um, probably at least another couple of months.
Now, is that gonna run into the same time that the, the two police officers are gonna be going to the academy? are going to be going to the academy at the same time?
It could.
So now?
They're going to leave in January.
So now we're going to be three down?
But hopefully by that timeframe, we should, like, there's one guy that passed his PT test, so we're going to expedite his background check. I really would like to see him onboard within the next three weeks to start an FTO field training program. But, you know, there is going to be that possibility of that timeframe if Sergeant Lund can't return to work, that, you know, we're going to be down another two officers.
The other question is that, when we're talking about backup, now, when you, Fern, I was talking to Lynn, well, Lynn, you are answering this question here, about the backup. Was that backup from Winslow PD backup? So we have two Cruisers on the road, or is this a backup depending on the sheriff's department?
No, we don't depend on the sheriff's department or the state police. We have a very good working relationship with Waterville police officers and police department. So mutually, we respond to back them up, they respond to back us up. For the times that, you know, if there's only one officer for that short period of time that's on duty by himself, Waterville's just literally across the river.
Okay, I, I know this is a little bit harder for me to understand, because I know a few years ago, we used to have three cops, police officers at night. I'm more concerned about the safety of a police officer that's there. I know the bridge is going to be blocked off in December. So if, say, if they're down towards Benton area and they need backup from Waterville, that's going to take a long time, instead of having a, another police cruiser on there. And I know that's going to be an expense, but I'm really concerned about the police officers here in Winslow and their safety. I mean, it's crazier now than it was back fifteen years ago when we had three police officers. That would be a concern for me.
And that's, and that's a legitimate concern for us as well. In the case that you mentioned, Fairfield PD is closer to the Benton side of things. They would as well respond to back our officers up. We also currently are allowing our supervisors to take the Cruisers home, so that in case something did break out, they can respond directly from their house.
I still have a problem with not being there soon enough, I'm sorry. I'm just concerned of you guys.
The reality of the situation is, is the manning prohibits us from having, you know, there's going to be a certain period of time, and it's currently three hours, where we have an officer working solo overnight.
What's the hours, is that between?
Three to six.
Three AM to six AM?
Correct. We, to address the weekend issue, Saturday, Sunday, we've authorized overtime, so that if an officer wishes to come in until the sergeant comes in at five, and, you know, we have overtime shifts posted for a second officer on Saturday and Sunday. But with the resources we currently have, there's nothing else we can really do.
Because we're short.
Because we're shorthanded, correct.
So just to add to that, Mike, I worked overnights for ten years in Oakland, and I worked from two to six in the morning by myself. Typically, two to six in the morning, you see tumbleweeds blowing through your town. If you get a call, it's going to be a big one. But most of the time, you don't get much of anything for calls. It's the time that we do business checks. So this is really common for this size town to have one person working. The fact that they have the supervisor who's allowed to take a cruiser home, they can respond a lot quicker. Kennebec Sheriff's Office, Maine State Police, they go home at two o'clock in the morning. And what they do is they handle calls from home if they get anything. And most of the time, they get to fall asleep in their recliner. So this is not unusual for what's happening here. We're short-staffed, there's no question about it. But by eliminating that position of amandas, has not contributed to this being short-staffed.
Yeah, but maybe not right now. But if we're shot three, three officers now, and we're going to be shot possibly three more, because we're going to have two in the academy and one with surgery, what do we do then? I mean, I think we, we better look at this really carefully, because I'm concerned for the safety of these officers here that's going to be on the, on the cruiser.
You might see me getting a haircut and throwing a gun belt on and helping these guys out.
Hey, half add.
Through the chair, I just wanted to ask, and I'm not being disrespectful, honestly. If it got to the point of where you're going to be, nobody's working, or you don't have anyone to work, or the surgery's going to interrupt that staffing, wouldn't you two guys just be able to jump in the car?
Well.
Couldn't you just work as a patrol or something?
Well, yes and no. I mean, we back up the officers during the day when we're working. Like, today I was out at the fire scene for two and a half hours. However, they have a strong union contract, and we can't take work away from a bargaining unit as non-union members.
Yeah.
No, we can help them.
We can help them, but we can't take over a shift.
That would be a grievance from the union.
Yep.
And just so I wanted to throw, the schedule falls under my, my job description, but we've talked to the officers multiple times, and they want to stay on the schedule right now. They, they like the schedule they have. And we've told them, we're going to leave them alone as long as we can, because we don't want to disrupt what they enjoy for a schedule. But if, if it got really bad, we might have, I'm sure we'd all get together as a unit, all the police officers, and decide what we need to do to move it around.
Yeah, and please keep us posted as far as more officers, if there's going to be more officers, that's going to be hired, and how that's going to work out when it comes to Lund being out, and then, of course, having those two other officers go into training.
And I just want to thank Council Hudson, she, we've got two applicants this week because of her. So I just want to personally thank her for sending people our way. And if anybody else knows anybody else, please send them down, so.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Louis, seeing we all lead up your time, do you need anything else?
You know, I, I just want to add one thing. I know that this has caused hot burn. But the bottom line is, I am trying everything I can to analyze the current work situation in this town. I don't want your property taxes to go up. My goal is to keep flat taxes. I can't guarantee I'm going to be able to make them go down, but my philosophy has always been to pull the string tight, so you don't have increases or decreases, so that people can budget for their property taxes just like they do for their car payments. That's the way to make it run. And, you know, I'm, I'm not done with this, and I've said this before. And, but I'm not going to jeopardize anybody's safety in the process. I'm going to make smart moves in conjunction with my department heads. So there's a little fat in this town, everybody knows that, and we're working on it.
And we're very lucky to have a great group of police officers that are willing to work hard. And I also want to say what a great job the fire department did today. I was actually on the scene also, and how they stopped that fire, not the trailer, the trailer, we all know how trailers are on fires, but how that group of guys stopped, and girls, stopped the fire from spreading through the woods as quickly as they did, they did a great job. And a lot of that was also mutual aid. I mean, everybody from this area came within five minutes, and they all worked great together, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else? See, nobody will close public comment.
Okay, on to executive session. A motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to thirty six MRSA subsection eight forty one two E, poverty abatement discussion.
Someone?
Second.